Showtime.
All right, we are live and it looks like we have folks popping in the room. So as always, give us a few seconds, everybody, as we allow everybody to get through the virtual door. I see a lot of familiar names this morning. Good morning, everyone. Give us about 15 seconds and we'll get, we'll get started once we get everybody here with us. All right, it looks like we still have a couple more people coming in this morning. But it's slowing down, so I think we can get going, Commissioner.
Thank you, Michelle. Good morning, everyone. I, I hope everyone is doing well. Welcome to our monthly Wellington Waverly Buckeye Zoom community conversation. In a moment, I'll turn it over to Michelle, but today we're, we're pleased that we have as our featured guest, Dwayne Penny, Dwayne Penny, and he is our new newly minted Solid Waste Department Director. And having him here, he'll talk about himself and give an update on the, on the landfill and, and our, our solid waste master plan. So that's the intent. And then after that, I'm happy to give you any updates that you're interested in learning about and answer your questions as best as I can. I did want to mention before I turn it over to Michelle, would just to give us a little bit about Zoom protocol for, you know, to make it easier for folks to participate. I wanted to mention that at the last meeting, I think it was the Wellington Fire Chief Gary Green that asked about a presentation on, on demographics. And we weren't able to quite get it together, but at our next meeting, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day, we will have Jacob Castillo, who is the Director of our Economic and Workforce Development Department. And he will be prepared to provide folks with economic health data, you know, some population and demographic data. So I just wanted folks to know that. Michelle, would you enlighten us about Zoom?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody, and please forgive me. I have a little frog in my throat this morning. Hopefully it is just allergies and not something more serious. I'm feeling okay though. But I, most of these names are familiar to me, so I think most of you guys know how to use Zoom at this point. With our meetings, but just a real quick reminder, if you have questions at any point, you're, feel free to put them in the Q and A box down below. That's how we chat with each other during these meetings, or if you want to actually talk with us, you guys know how to raise your hands. Um, there should be a little raise your hand button down below. Please feel free to raise your hand so we can chat a little bit and I'll walk you through getting yourself unmuted once we get to that point. Other than that, we might use the chat box to send out some links, so keep an eye on the chat box personally. And look forward to talking to everyone this morning. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you very much. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, I, I see at least as far as attendees, at this point, we have eight and one of them is Rebecca, Rebecca Kinney, one of the Wellington Town Trustees. So I, I certainly want to acknowledge that and appreciate your participation in these, in these meetings. And I think actually coming up, I forget exactly when we've scheduled a, a meeting between the Commissioners and the Wellington Town Trustees, you know, to get to know each other better and to build our relationships. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dwayne Penny. I think he has a couple of slides to show, but it would be really great to tell us about yourself and your background and who you are as a, a solid waste person. And also as a human being, perhaps that's important. And welcome to the team.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. And, and Commissioner, thank you for inviting me to, to the meeting this morning and Michelle. My name is Dwayne Penny and I am the Solid Waste Director of Laramo County. And to tell you a little bit about myself, I've been in the industry, construction and solid waste industry for 40 years. I raised my family in Greeley and my kids are off and running. I guess they're not kids anymore. I have grandkids. And so pretty much between Colorado Springs and Port Collins has been my career. I built a lot of highways, interstates, and I also was the general manager for a number of years managing the larger landfills in Colorado for BFI and ally waste. And during my time, I also managed and constructed transfer stations, recycling facilities, and quite a bit of construction on infrastructure for those types of facilities. And so that's been pretty much my entire career. And I'm really excited to be on board with Laramo County. And I'd certainly like to get to know people. And I'm looking forward to getting to know you folks at Wellington and Waverly. And I, I did prepare a few slides and I will. Michelle, is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay. Can you see the PowerPoint, Michelle?
Not yet. Sometimes, once you hit share screen, you gotta kind of pick which one you wanna share.
Okay, let me try it one more time.
You bet. We'll get through it. Don't worry.
Yes, there we go. Now I can open my
Yep.
PowerPoint. Okay.
Well, now we don't, we still don't see the PowerPoint. We see your screen, but not the PowerPoint.
How about now, Michelle?
No. Do you see it, Commissioner? No. We see your, we see like your backdrop, your backdrop. So what you might want to do, if you unshare, open up the PowerPoint and then share again and select the PowerPoint, that might be the way to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, stop sharing your screen.
For some reason.
I think I can stop it for you. So let me stop it for you.
Okay.
And then pull up your PowerPoint.
Okay.
And then go to share screen. And you should have a bunch of different options of things to share. Once you do that, try to find the one with your PowerPoint on it. Well, we got again, we got your like background.
That's interesting, Michelle. I think.
You know, you could do, Dwayne, real quick is if you want to email it to me, I can, I can open it up for you. That might be an option.
Well, I apologize. I had practiced on this and it was going well.
You know, technology sometimes gets the best of us, Dwayne. Well, as I said, we'll get through it together.
Okay. Well, I apologize to everyone.
No problem. And Commissioner, while Dwayne's sending it to me, I don't know if you have maybe a filler. I feel like I'm, I'm hosting a TV show right now and I'm looking for someone to fill some time.
Well, sure, sure, Michelle. And folks, maybe there's a question that you'd like to offer to me. I, I'm happy to give you updates on, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening with the county. But I don't know if there are particular topics that you're interested to know about. Maybe someone could pose a question and we could go from there. Or raise a hand.
Good idea, Commissioner. And Dwayne, my last name's Bird, if you're looking for me.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
Well, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll say a few words if that helps, although quiet is good as well. One thing I could share with folks that I think would be of interest is that, you know, we've been getting a lot of, we've had a lot of work sessions in the last few weeks. And for example, yesterday, we had a very detailed work session in the morning, a presentation from Lori Hodges, who is the Director of our Office of Emergency Management. And she was providing us with an update on the Cameron Peak, Cameron Peak Fire Recovery and provided us with a lot of details about where we're, where we're at in that process and what some of the costs will be to do everything from, you know, watershed protection to debris removal and, and the issues of, of, you know, public lands and roadways and private lands and roadway. So that, that's an example of an update. And, and I don't know if folks have particular questions about that. But, you know, we did get the disaster declaration from FEMA. This was back in January. And that will allow us to access FEMA dollars regarding what's called their Public Assistance Program. We didn't get the declaration for their individual assistance program. And we, we are, we did get what's called a Small Business Administration Declaration. And all of these things will allow us to access resources. And typically there's a cost share. And, but we are making progress in, on that because there's a big concern about flooding and debris flows, especially when, when the snows melt up in the high country. The last thing I'll say, because I see we have the, the slide presentation on is that we, we also had two community town hall meetings that Lori Hodges and her team hosted. All three Commissioners participated. One was last Saturday and the one was on, I think it was on February. It was the, the Wednesday before, but basically there we had people from the National Weather Service, as well as from Summit Stone Behavioral Health, and they had their Colorado Spirit Program, but, and, and other, other community partners. But that, that was really interesting to learn about the hydrology and, and weather forecasting and, and how we have things in place to try to, you know, protect property and lives and, you know, help our, help our environment. I'll stop there. And again, if folks have more questions, I can get into, we can get into that later. Thank you. I hope that was a proper filler, Michelle and Dwayne.
Wonderful job, Commissioner. I'm gonna really quickly see, before Dwayne, you get going, I want to make sure I can move the slides. Can everyone see me moving the slides?
Yes.
Am I going the wrong way though? There we go. All right. So Dwayne, you go ahead and just let me know when you need me to move along.
And Dwayne, before you start, I just wanted to acknowledge a, a comment in the Q and A from Rebecca. I sat on, you know, on one of your interviews. Congrats. I also serve on the Policy Council. That's good. Yes, of course. On the Policy Council for Solid Waste on behalf of Wellington. I'd like, I'd love to sit down and chat at some point on some of my concerns and considerations for Wellington. Please let me know if we can schedule that. So I wanted folks to be aware of that. Thanks, Rebecca.
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Rebecca. Certainly can. You know, it, a part of my getting established and, and getting on board with everyone, it's important for me to reach out to the folks in Wellington and I certainly will. So you will, you will hear from me. Michelle, if you go to the next slide, thank you. So I, I'll dig right into the, the landfill status update. We were able to meet with our consultant, HCR. They are putting our engineer design and operations plan together. And the comments will finalize the comments in the next two weeks and at the end of the month, the entire package will go to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for their review. And once, uh, once, once the CDPHG gets the comments, we anticipate about two months for them to go through the information because it's been sharing back and forth and getting comments and, and things like that. And so we're looking forward to moving that process forward. And, and the other thing that we are doing at the, at the facility is we are also looking at the site infrastructure, which, which would be the entrance, where we are going to put the maintenance facility, the scales, the parking of the equipment and all those sorts of things. And those will be plotted on a set of plans. And everyone will be able to see that once we finalize that. Presently, it's in the evaluation stage. And so things are changing quite a bit back and forth as we work with certainly the state on those types of things. And the work that has been completed to date, I, I did speak with Lou and he had mentioned that he had gone through those details at the last meeting. So I won't put anybody through that again. The second part of, of the EDOP, once it is approved to the county for review, and it would go to the Certificate of Designation for the Commissioner's Review and signing on, up on the technical review.
Hey, Dwayne, what does EDOP stand for?
Good, good question, Michelle. That's the Engineer Design and Operations Plan. And, and that's an extensive document that CDPHG uses when they cite a facility. And within those documents are all the technical reports and, and all the operations data and all the compliance that will be required to do to operate the facility. Good question. Thank you. And Michelle, if you go to the next slide, please. And maybe the next one, I, I kind of get, get ahead of myself and one more. So that's a pretty good update on, on the landfill. I, I know the routes, routing and the roads getting into the facility. Those are all important to everyone and that is still in, in the evaluation stage. I know we're looking at everything really hard. And, and hopefully as we finish the EDOP, we'll be able to have some of those conversations internally with the county to make sure we're all on the same page. And so it is work ongoing. That, that is pretty much for the landfill update at this time. Obviously, as things move forward towards midsummer, it will pick up. And, and I did want to say as part of that, I did meet Cody from Wellington and we had a pretty good conversation. And one of the things that was important is, is that we figure out our communications channel to make sure everyone in Wellington is being important. And so that is on my list is, is I think most, most folks up in that area know Rizelda was our communication specialist. And, and she had some personal matters that she had to deal with in the family. So she is no longer with us. So we're working on, on replacing her and we do understand that that's an important communication is very important to everyone. So skipping on to the next, I, I would like to update on the infrastructure. The, there, there are two projects currently that we're working towards in the, the transfer station, central transfer station, which is located on the Laramo County landfill. We, we are evaluating some design options right now, getting really close to the finalizing some of those options. But we're, we are evaluating some, some design options that will help enhance the facility for long term. The second project that we are working on is the compost. We have a consultant who's finished the preliminary evaluation of a compost facility. And we are working with them to study that data and evaluate what that would look like. And that pretty well takes me to the next piece, which I, I think my last slide should be the timeline, maybe one more, Michelle. Thank you. So our, our timeline for the central transfer station 2022, that, that is, that might move just a little bit because of our evaluating some of the design options. The North landfill, it looks like it's moving forward about as anticipated. The compost, that, the composting, we were scheduled to be moving a little bit quicker on that. But with some evaluations, it's taken a little bit longer. And so hopefully we'll be able to get some, an update on that on our next meeting. Construction and demolition, that is in the evaluation stage. That is always one to take a hard look at with certain types of demo. And we are evaluating that based on our waste characterization plan. And then the last part, the food waste composting, that will be a part of the compost, yard composting. And so that one is under evaluations right now. And so I think that's about it, Commissioner. I hope I didn't take up too much time.
Oh, I, it's, the time is not an issue. I think this is important to folks. And Michelle, could you help us out? There are at least two questions in the Q and A. They both come from Zach Thode, wondering if you would respond to those questions, Dwayne?
Absolutely. Questions, Dwayne. And the first one from Zach is, is there an option to use yard waste as animal feed? Compost is usually a carbon negative operation.
That's a good question. You know, I don't have the answer for that. I think I'll write that one down. Zach and I, I'll have to do some evaluations on that and get back with you if that's okay.
Yeah. And, and that is important. I, I know that Zach has raised that issue before in some emails. And I think I've, I've shared that with Lori Cadrich, our Community Planning Director. And I, and I think the idea is that, and Zach, if you want to, you know, chime in. But the idea would be that, you know, things like grass clippings and all of that, rather than directing, directing them to the, to the, the proposed compost facility, that somehow there might be a way to get those directly to animals for, for feed. That's my understanding of what Zach is suggesting.
Okay.
But I'm sure there's a lot more to it.
Zach just threw in there, I think this is just a comment to go along with the discussion. Think that's a 50,000 tons of grass is equal to about 1,600 acres of corn. So that's just some, that's just a little fact Zach threw in there. Interesting. Thanks, Zach. Good info. And then second question from Zach is about the CND process material. So Zach asks, can CND processed material be used to generate electricity as a renewable resource?
You know, there, there, that's a good question, Zach. Thank you for that question. Taking CD to the next step, which is to, there, there, I'm going to answer your question in the long way. If, if construction demolition would, different types of materials that can be made into pellets, for one thing, or you take it to the last step, which is carbon char. Those are some of the evaluations that we're looking at with CND. And so what we're doing right now is, is we've identified the construction and demolition types of material that we have coming into the landfill. And, and with those materials, we will continue to take it to the next step, which is how much volume do we have to have? What, what is the process that we would use? And who are the end users for the material? And ultimately, you know, renewable energy is, is always important. And if there's a way to do it economically, then, then that's something that will be in our evaluation chain as we move forward with the CND.
Thank you, Dwayne, for the answer. I am not seeing any other questions right now and I don't have any hands raised. Michener Kafalas has his hand.
Thank you, Michelle. I, I wonder, Dwayne, if you could clarify a little bit more what your timeline means. For example, you, on, on the yard waste composting, you have, and the right side of the arrow is June 2021. But I don't think we're going to have yard waste composting operational by this June. So I would appreciate a clarification of what your timeline means, sir.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, in, in working with our consultant, we, we are pretty well finished with the evaluation of the compost. And, and so the next step is internally to introduce it and, and begin to really evaluate what that means for location. And so I think the, the June was more of a, and, and I thank you for pointing that out. I think the end of June is to have the analyzing done and figure out what we really can and can't do, and then introduce it internally within the county to make sure that this is the direction that makes sense for us. And, and so what I will do is I'll, I'll take that arrow and I'll clean that up so that it goes out to when would the facility actually be open? And so that will be, that's something that I need to do and put there, when would the facility be open? And so, good, good question, Commissioner. Thank you.
I think that would be helpful. I, I think in any future presentations of timelines, you know, you know, in terms of operationalizing something and then, you know, steps along the way to get us there as far as further analysis and, and that kind of thing, Dwayne.
Yes.
I believe there's another question from Zach.
We did get another question from Zach. Hi, Zach. Zach says, we have an unhealthy forest evidenced by fires. We need to manage some of these fuels. So a large gasification system in Northern Laramo County could help with CND and forest products. Guess it's not really a question, just a statement, but I don't know if you have a response.
No, that, that is a, a good thought, Zach. I mean, gasification. You know, so if we look at the wood products, obviously that are laying down trees that are fallen brush and things like that, grinding that material up, what, what I think, Zach, to make sure I'm understanding it, you're proposing that we gasify that material and, and create energy off, off that material. And, and I think that's something that definitely could be evaluated. Gasification is, it's, it's come a long ways as a technology. I don't know that we could do that with that material. I, I would have to do more research, but I think it's a great question.
Thank you, Dwayne, and thank you, Zach. And again, for what it's worth, I, I've been asking our solid waste folks and our community planning folks to really push the envelope a little bit on these things and, and, and think outside the box. And I, I just want to remind folks that, you know, one of the underlying purposes of all of this is that our current landfill is set to expire. I think by, I don't know what the latest estimates are. We, we're using different techniques to extend it a little bit. But the current landfill is set to expire. And then of course, with the, all of the, 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 the regional solid waste master plan, the inherent goal is that we would reduce or recycle divert solid waste by at least 40%. And, and so I know that there are a lot of factors on, on to achieve that goal. And I would hope that that 40% is a, is a minimal golden. And then, you know, it raises the issue about markets, you know, recycling markets are always pretty volatile. And, and, and so I hope we're, and I think you are, including analysis of how do we create our own local markets? How do we, you know, some of the wood products that come out of the forest, you know, can we use any of that local, you know, regionally, et cetera? I just want to put that out there. So folks know we're, we're encouraging the solid waste folks to think outside the box. We, we have to.
Yes, thank you. I, I agree 100%. I, I do like to think outside of the box. And, you know, to Zach's point about renewable energy, those are things that are always on my mind too, Zach. So you know, we'll continue to, I, I have written your questions down and, and we'll get some answers to you.
And Dwayne, I can get you, Zach's been very engaged with the county. He's been on numerous boards. I can get you Zach's contact information.
That would be good. Thank you, Michelle.
You bet. Commissioner and Dwayne, I don't see any other open questions or hands raised at this time.
Well, then I think if there are no specific questions related to this topic, we can, Dwayne, of course, you're welcome to hang out with us as much as you'd like. I, I do want to let folks know that at 10:30, I will be picked up by Lori Cadrich, our Community Planning Infrastructure Resources Director. And we're actually going to do a, a ride along where I, I asked her to show me all the potential routes for a trash hauling trucks that would be transferring solid waste from the, you know, these, the transfer station on Trilby there and, and the west side of Fort Collins, you know, up to the new landfill. So we're going to be doing that. And I know we're going to meet up with Dwayne up at the landfill site. And I've also asked, I'd like to visit the Wellington Convenience Center to kind of visualize that and see how, how that works. So we are doing that. So we are doing that later this morning, and and I wanted folks to be aware of that. But otherwise, if there are no other questions on solid waste and recycling, reducing, reusing, then we can move on to other topics.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Glenn, it's great to get to know you a little bit better.
Yep.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Well, so one thing I'll just say to try to get the conversation going is regarding the update I provided a moment ago on the yesterday's presentation from Lori Hodges. You know, one, a couple of the takeaways are that we, you know, we have a a better picture of what some of the costs are going to be to do the, you know, hazardous tree removal, debris removal, you know, supporting property owners and so forth. And, you know, based on the information we received yesterday, there will likely be about a $1.5 million cost to the county. And if you'll remember last fall, the 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 board, we did appropriate $9.2 million general fund dollars, general fund balance dollars, you know, for Cameron Peak Recovery efforts, and 6 million of that is likely going to go towards culverts and culvert upgrading and replacements. That's a that's a big deal. And and there are various cost sharing opportunities with FEMA and NRCS and so forth in terms of, you know, mitigating or or preventing soil erosion and potential mudslides and watershed protection and all of that. So I just want folks to know that we are moving forward with that. And if there are questions that I'm happy, happy to answer them. Beyond that, I again, I'm I'm open to what folks want to talk about.
So Commissioner Steve has his hand raised.
Ah, yes, great. Hello, Steve.
Well, let me, hold on, I'm struggling a little bit, Steve. All right. Steve, just go ahead and unmute yourself. You know how to do this. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, John. How are you doing this morning?
Hanging in there, Steve.
Good.
Good to hear from you.
It's it's good to be heard from. John, I've I've got a question or two for you, and and trust me when I say this, this is a sincere question. It's not a setup. It's not a yeah, I think you know me, I'm I'm a I'm a square shooter. I just, I I really am sincere here. I've I've got a constitution in front of me, as I know you do, too. You keep it there, just like I do. And, you know, John, when I when I look at, and I don't have to read the First Amendment, people know what it's like. When we talk about the the freedoms of the, you know, religion and and freedom of speech, right to peace, assembly, and grievances to the government, the the grievances, the government repress, I, obviously, as you well know, I I sent a court request to the county and the state just asking for science justification to all the rules and mandates. And after I was ignored, basically, all I got was it was, it was definitely written by an attorney or bureaucrat. It definitely wasn't written by a medical, you know, professional. But anyway, that that's not my my point. My my point is this. For over a year now, we've had these rights infringed upon. We haven't been able to go to church. We can't go to, you know, a concert, a sporting event. We can't, we can't even, you know, we couldn't even get more than 10 people in our own home. And this constitution, as you know, is something that every elected official, including yourself, up to and especially the governor, took an oath, swore to an oath to uphold. Now, when I look at this, the the First Amendment and the whole Constitution, nowhere, anywhere, does it say that any of these rights can be dismissed, taken away, or appozed for any reason in any way, shape, or form? There have been disasters in the history of this country where the the government hasn't taken these actions to take all these people's civil liberties away. You know, there's tremendous amount of mental health and suicide depression that have been totally ignored throughout this entire thing. And, you know, this is another discussion, but I think we can, a lot of us agree that this has been more of a power and ego thing than a than a science thing. Here here's my question, John. Two two questions, I guess. I I lied to you. I did. Can you tell me have you feel honestly 100% and some of your colleagues, too, this includes our governor, with 100% certainty say that you have absolutely abided by the oath that you swore to uphold the Constitution in its form completely? Second question, depends on how you answer. The first one is what should happen to elected officials and appointed bureaucrats of the like the people with the Health Department do when they have not abided by the oath that they took to uphold the Constitution of the United States? Thank you, John.
Commissioner, I think you're muted.
Look, I I don't want to dismiss your questions, and I don't want to give you some kind of, you know, politician's answer. You know, we all, when we get, we sworn into office, we we take an oath to uphold the Colorado and the and the United States Constitution. I I know that, you know, people, there are a lot of people out there that feel like, you know, the the First Amendment, our First Amendment rights have been infringed upon, freedom to worship and all of the others, freedom to assemble and and so forth. And I I get all that. But, you know, to answer your question, do you feel that we've abided 100% by? When you talk about the Constitution, I guess you're referring to both of them. I I think we have. I mean, you know, we we unprecedented times. I mean, we also have a responsibility to you know, to make sure that, you know, we're we're doing what we can to protect public health, safety, and welfare. And and and, you know, this, it's it's interesting that we have this, we're having this conversation, Steve, that because tomorrow, March 5th, is the one-year anniversary, I suspect you know that, the one-year anniversary that we had the first COVID-19 case. And my understanding is that, you know, upwards to 6,000 people have died in the state of Colorado. And and at this point, we seems like we're turning the corner on a number of things, you know, public health metrics, and also in terms of vaccination. And we are, you know, we're so I'd say the answer to your first question is, I can only speak for myself. And I and I and I do carry around the Constitution, and I feel like I've abided by the the Constitution, you know, certainly within the context of this public health emergency that we've been dealing with for the past year. And as far as consequences, I I guess if I feel like I've been abiding by it, and I can only speak for myself, then 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 perhaps the kind, you know, other than people getting angry at me or which happens sometimes, I I feel like I've I've done my best to do my job, and I uphold the oath that I've taken and also make sure that folks are safe and 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 also that we're doing our best to support businesses, you know, to get through this. That's my answer.
John, if I could just respond really quickly, I I appreciate it. But, again, I think the meat of what I had asked about, you you didn't say, you know, it doesn't say in the Constitution that in the middle of a public crisis that you can suspend our rights. It doesn't give you or any other elected official the power to take away people's civil liberties and rights for anything. It doesn't matter if it's a public and I am not in any way, shape, or form belittling the importance of COVID. Don't get me wrong. I my, I've got a science background. I know what's going on out there. I am not saying that. But I am more concerned about our civil liberties being taken from us. And, you know, I don't know where the ACLU is. They're non-existent. They're useless in this because they haven't been around. But that's another whole issue. What what happens in the next time? What happens the next time there's a public crisis? And we say, oh, we took away our rights this time. So I I I got it. I got to totally 100% disagree with you that you abided by the Constitution when you said, I can't go to church, I can't peacefully assemble because of a public health emergency. It doesn't say anything in the Constitution about any excuse for any person in this country to take away civil liberties, and that's what happened to us. I know there's a lot of people that feel like me that aren't saying anything, and that's up to each their own. You know, a lot of people are afraid of getting, you know, called names and, you know, I say, he's some right-wing whacknut. I don't care. People can call me names. I could give a crap less, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I think if if all you got is to call me a name, you got nothing. But it it isn't it. It's about civil liberties, and it doesn't matter about your ideological party, your beliefs. When your government can come in and tell you how many and who can be in your own home, I think everybody should be concerned about that. And it shouldn't be a partisan thing. It shouldn't be a political. It shouldn't be ideological. It should be what this country was founded on, that people came to this. John, I'm not, you know, I'm not, you know, lecturing you, but people escaped the Great Britain because of the tyranny and the people's rights were taken away. That's why they came here and formed this and wrote this Constitution. And I'll say the last thing, you know, cliche, people who ignore history are doomed to repeat it. And if we don't pay attention to what our government is doing and the civil liberties that we're losing, we're we're going to lose it. And I I promise this is my last quote, you know, President Reagan always said that the total loss of freedom is yet is only one generation away. Thanks, John.
Of course, Stephen. And if you want, you know, you and I can have this conversation offline, but I I guess the last thing I'll say, if I may, is that, you know, another, you know, in terms of the the right to worship and to go to church as a one of Christian faith, you know, it also, we we know we have the three branches of government, legislative, executive, and judicial, and there was, you know, people were concerned about that. And and I think you're right. If we if we don't express concern, if we've gone too far with this stuff, I mean, we we still have the ability to redress our grievances. And in the case of, you know, folks being able to worship and go to church, and how many people could assemble, you know, in church, there was a court case that basically said it was unconstitutional to limit the number of folks. And and so as a result of that, you know, there there has been the ability for more people to assemble, you know, to be able to worship. So in my view, our checks and balances are one way that, you know, we can try to put some accountability on and this whole thing. And and of course, the checks and balances don't always work the way I think, you know, our framers intended. So that's that's all I would offer. And sorry that I didn't answer your questions adequately, but I kind of suspect that I wouldn't. And again, I'm happy to continue the conversation, but I'd like to get back to, you know, what other folks want to talk about. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm looking here. I'm not seeing any questions right now. So this might be a good time to address any of the topics that you wanted to talk about today that maybe we haven't hit yet.
Well, you know, I mentioned about the, you know, the Cameron Peak Fire Recovery Efforts. You know, if we want to touch on COVID-19 and where we're at with that, I I think there there is a fair amount of good news to share. And, you know, recently, I I mean, as far as, you know, vaccinations, for example, it was Limer County, you know, one of the goals was to make sure that folks who are 70-plus years old received the, at least the first dose of the vaccination, 70% of those people. And actually, Limer County achieved that last Friday on, I believe. And then the the state, they achieved the statewide goal of 70% of 70-plus folks, I believe it was on on Sunday, which was the February 28th. And and in my view, that's a very positive thing. And by achieving that statewide goal, it now allows Lamber County, for example, we're still in the yellow level as far as the Dial Framework, but the 360 or so businesses that are certified or participating in the Level Up Program do have the option of of going operating, you know, in level blue. And and we're also looking at some other things to try to support businesses because, you know, when you say you can do increased capacity or you have more people in your business, you know, that's constrained by, you know, what what are the the physical space that you actually have? And and businesses are still supposed to have physical distancing and all of that. But in my view, that's a positive thing, that we're getting more people vaccinated. I think we're almost approaching 100,000 total in Limer County as far as vaccinations. I actually I'm in the 65 to 69 crowd. And I actually received an email because I signed up on the county website back in February, February 7th, I think it was. And and I received an email just the other day saying you could schedule an appointment. And I went out to the ranch yesterday at 3:30. I received the first dose of the the Moderna vaccine vaccine. And my wife actually was also in that age group. She went the night before to Putah Valley Hospital, and she received hers. So I think that if we want to get back to, you know, some semblance of normalcy, the the vaccine is part of the, you know, the vaccinations are part of the equation, getting to that level of herd immunity. And and I I think barring any, you know, any any things that that might undermine, you know, our progress. I think we're looking at a a summertime that's going to be at least a lot different than last summer. And and so I think I think that's positive news, good news. And that we, you know, there was a period where where we didn't see any deaths. We've, I think in Limer County, we're up to 224 deaths. But there was a a period there, the last number of days, I don't know if that's changed, where there have been no deaths. So I think everything we're doing on the public health side is 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 helping to move us forward. And and it's not to dismiss or diminish, you know, concerns expressed about freedoms and liberties. But we really need to get this thing over with and and move on in our lives. So that that's one update I would share.
Yeah, there are a couple of questions from Gail about vaccines. Do you want to, do you want to touch base on those now?
I'll try, Michelle, with your help. Yes, please, if you want to tell us.
Absolutely. So I'll just kind of lump the two together. So she says, Dan has not been notified to get his COVID shot, and he's 77 years old. Gail finally got hers a week ago. How are organizations choosing people? And then she goes on to say she signed both of us up on four different sites, including Limer County.
Well, I think the recommendation that I would offer, and Michelle, you can help me with this, is that, you know, and I've heard that from other folks, but that that they've signed up and they've still not heard, and they're in that 70, you know, 70-plus category. I think one recommendation is to, you know, there's our, that the phone number that we have, 498, is it 5500? And 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 there are folks staffing that. And if you call them and say, this is my situation, can you give me an update? Why haven't I been called? I think that's probably a thank you. And and that's our that's our Joint Information Center that's related to COVID-19. Isn't that right, Michelle?
Correct, yes.
So that, yeah, I've, you know, I've heard those kinds of concerns, and I I think that's the best course of action. And then, I don't know if that was Gail or or who offered that, but if if you're still not getting good information, please feel free to reach out to me or and or Michelle, and and we can certainly follow up. I I can share a quick example with you. I had been contacted by someone who her husband, they they went for, he went for his first dose, and this was a while ago. And apparently, he's experienced some degree of dementia. And they were concerned about the experience they had at Putah Valley Hospital, where they actually, you know, they had to go inside. There were a lot of people there. They felt that they had to had to wait 45 minutes. And and, you know, there wasn't exactly the proper distancing. And and so that was brought to my attention, and I reached out to Tom Gonzalez. And, you know, he worked with other folks, and we made sure that, you know, the hospital was aware of that, you know, that concern. And I, it's been corrected. And in fact, the second dose, this 70-plus-year-old older adult was scheduled for this past Tuesday, and I learned on Monday that they will have an option to go into a the emergency department clinic where there'll be less people. So they were very pleased, but happy to try to intervene where it makes sense and and be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. It looks like Zach has a follow-up question regarding the COVID dashboard. Zach says, would it be possible to show on the COVID dashboard what the comparable historical influenza deaths are for Limer County? It seems like 204 confirmed deaths with 94% over 65 out of the whole population isn't a pandemic.
Certainly, I'll make note of that. And and I can ask, you know, it's interesting, Zach, that I think related to your question, I I, there was a New York Times article, I don't know if I still have it, but it showed a bar graph, and it showed you know, because people have said compared to the the influenza, the 1918 influenza pandemic, that we don't compare to that. But it shows that, at least nationally, you know, with over half, you know, five, over half a million people who have died from this disease, you know, compared to other diseases, it's it's very significant. But you're asking in terms of the 224 deaths, But you're asking, in terms of the 224 deaths, the high percentage of those folks being older folks, is there a way to show that? We can, we can follow up on that, Zach.
I don't, hold on, one more question. Okay, Michael wants us to pass along to the Health Department that their partners that they need to do more than just sending an email reminder about appointments. My mom, 74 years old, missed her appointment because she does not normally use email and thus missed the reminder. My dad, 75 years old, got his vaccination because he received a phone call reminder in addition to the email reminder. Phone calls or text messages tend to be better way of reminding than email.
That was from Michael?
That was from Michael. Yes, Michael, let me pull it down.
And I presume you have the contact information there, Michelle, since folks-
I do have contact information for everybody that, that signed up for today, Commissioner.
Michael, yes, we can follow up. And your point is well taken that you know, not everyone is paying attention to their emails every, every hour. And it's easy to miss that. And I thought that there were some options. I'm not quite sure why. Who was it that, that missed their appointment because they didn't check the email? Was it?
It was his mom.
Okay. So certainly we can, we can follow up on that and, and clarify what, you know, what level of consistency is there? You know, in terms of how we contact folks. I know in the case of myself and my wife, it was an email. And, and it wasn't a phone call or a text, but I will certainly follow up. Thank you.
Commissioner, is there an opportunity, I don't think we have any questions right now, for me to plug just a couple of things that are happening with the county really quickly?
Yes, please.
The first one, and I'll put links to all of these things in the chat box. But I know I have no ability to do two things at once, so I'll talk about them and then I'll put in the links. First one is our Environmental Stewardship Awards. And we are accepting nominations right now for those through almost the end of March, March 28th. So if you don't know someone who you think is deserving of a nomination, or maybe you yourself are deserving of a nomination, please nominate them for our Environmental Stewardship Awards. The second is our Workforce Development Center, Economic and Workforce Development Department is hosting some summer employment nights. It is a virtual event for youth. So if you have a youth in your life that needs a summer job, one of them was already, we've missed one, but there's a second one coming up on March 10th. I'll put the link to that information in the chat box as well. And then the final thing is that if you guys know any Larimer County residents that have small businesses that were impacted by the wildfires, we did get approval for loans from the Small Business Administration. And the deadline to apply for those that had property damage is April 26th. I'll put that link in the website. And then the deadline to apply for economic injury from the wildfires is November 23rd. So I just wanted to throw those two things out there and I'll get links in the chat box after I look at what question. Oh, I'll, I'll read this question out to you, John, and then I'll go ahead and put those links in the chat box. Steve asked when we might get to return to in-person meetings.
I can't say 100%, Steve, but I, my hope is that we can return to in-person meetings at the T-Bar or where folks want to meet by the summertime.
Thanks, Commissioner. I am kind of monitoring both while I'm putting in links right now really quickly for folks.
And I'll just say, another thing that's important is that, you know, we're continuing to make progress on updating our land use code, Phase 2. And for example, last night, I listened to an open house, our first open house regarding the oil and gas regulations. Folks might be reminded that last year, I think it was in April, April 6th, 2020, the board approved the Lammer County Oil and Gas regs. And then, of course, the state finally adopted updated regulations in November, and those took effect in January, I think it was 15th. And so we have the charge of updating our oil and gas regulations to at least meet the standards that are in the state guidelines and requirements. So that process is underway. And based on community input, we've decided, and we haven't finalized this, but there's a proposed extended timeline. Originally, we were looking at about a two-and-a-half-month timeline to update our oil and gas regs and adopt them. But now we've extended that by at least two months. And we'll have more discussions about that next week with our, our planning folks. So that, you know, that's one thing that's really, really important. And I wanted folks to be aware of that. And I think if you go to larimer.org backslash planning, and I'm sure Michelle will do her magic to put that in the, in the chat. But, and then there's the, the link to oil and gas regs. You can, you can see the revised timeline and ways to engage and that sort of thing. Part of the update of the land use code also includes our sign code. And that's getting to be interesting because there are some companies that are submitting sign applications. And we are, you know, we need to update our sign, sign code regulations. But then there are other things related to affordable housing, development standards, you know, variety of things. And so people should be aware of that. The other thing I'll mention, and then I'll ask a question of folks, is that we've also been getting updates about our five-year strategic plan. And as a reminder, we have those three overarching goals, infrastructure, economic opportunity, and how we provide services to folks. In the last few weeks, we've gotten our, what we call our quarterly updates. And within each of those goals are specific objectives. So for example, in the infrastructure goal, you know, one of the objectives deals with regional transportation. And so, you know, that's an important thing. For example, one of the issues that's come up with Wellington folks is that there aren't many options for people who live in Wellington to come to work, you know, in Fort Collins or other parts of the region. And I know that there's been a lot of discussion about could we create some kind of a transit option, you know, a bus service or something. So that would be part of the mix in terms of a, an updated regional transportation master plan. So that's an example of something that is in our strategic plan. And also broadband initiative and things of that nature. Also, you know, it deals with water. And I know one thing that's of interest to folks like Zach or people who work the land is, you know, making progress on how we can implement water sharing agreements. And that's going to be something we need to work through with people who have working farms and ranches. I would like to share, it just comes to mind, and that at our Tuesday meeting, Administrative Matters meeting, we did approve to allocate $150,000 from our open space sales tax, Department of Natural Resources, for a conservation easement, 73 acres north of Wellington, the Dixon Station. It's land owned by the, what is it called? The Pooter Valley Cooperative Farms. And they do long-term leases. And so that's an example of, you know, of working with various partners to preserve, to put a conservation easement and to have that as a productive farmland. And Jodar Farms, which, you know, raises animals and for sale, chickens and hogs and, and other things, I believe. They're the ones who will be able to use that land, you know, to continue their operations. So the strategic plan is really important. And it also gets into affordable housing. It also gets into childcare. I think we recently, we had a survey out there, Affordable Housing Survey. And I think the deadline for that was the end of February. Is that right, Michelle? Do you know? Yeah, but-
That sounds about right, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. The goal there was to get input from folks. And I think it'll help inform our needs analysis that we're doing with a consulting group out of Denver, Root Policy. And ultimately, they're going to be providing us with a report in about next month or so, or this month, maybe the end of this month, in terms of what they determined from other kinds of focus groups and the survey results and everything else. And that will inform, you know, what role the county has in continuing to help with the challenges of the lack of affordable housing. There's a Q and A there, Michelle. Should I take a deep breath and see what that Q and A is all about?
Yeah, Zach says the budget tool on the Affordable Housing link didn't work. Zach, do you mean the Affordable Housing Survey that we did? Is that what you're referencing? Or Commissioner, do you know what he's referencing?
I'm not sure. I suppose part of the answer to that would be when, when he went on there. If it was within the month of February, it should have been working. And I don't know why it wouldn't have been. It's that housingimpactlab.com. I don't know if that's the site he went to. Larimer, you know, what was it? Larimer.housingimpactlab.com.
I would have to search for it, but I, this is the first I've heard, that the budget, there we go. And Zach, I think it's closed right now, which is why it, some, in theory, the survey ended at the end of February. So I'm not sure when you tried to submit the survey. He said he tried a week ago.
I would just say, Zach and others, if we've missed the deadline for participating in the survey, which I took and it's, you know, it's about 10 minutes, it was very interactive, it was very interesting. I certainly welcome any input that folks have, if they want to, if they have some, you know, concerns or, you know, they, based on their experience, they have an understanding of what are some of the gaps and what are some of the proposed solutions for addressing those. I know, you know, housing for agricultural workers is a big issue. And in the rural areas, and there are other things. And we are going to be looking at diversity of housing options, but that's the best I can offer. But I certainly welcome additional input.
And Zach, I'll reach out to our contractors that did the survey and see. I'll ask about the budget link, so I'll get back to you on that, Zach.
So I guess to, to close on the strategic plan thing, that's really important. And, you know, the other goal is services and we're, you know, we're looking at, you know, our facilities and we're looking at how we can be more creative with, you know, more people working off-site. And we're saving county, you know, tax dollars because, for example, in Human Services, Department of Human Services, we were leasing a whole bunch of space out at Midpoint Drive. And that's shifted. And that's an example of, you know, trying, I think, trying to be environmentally responsible. Because, you know, one of the issues with transportation, it turns out that vehicle, vehicle miles traveled is one of the biggest contributors to greenhouse gas emissions. And that's another thing that we're starting to work on, and that is this Climate Smart Larimer County Framework. If people are interested in getting an update on that, that might be a topic we could do down the road at a subsequent meeting. But I'll stop there and just ask if there are other, other issues or topics that you would like us to address, where I could invite or we can invite a featured guest. Reminder that the next meeting is April 1, 7:30 to 9:00. It'll be Zoom, at least for the next few months. And we've invited Jacob Castillo, you know, to provide us with economic health data, et cetera. But if there are, if people are interested in getting an update, for example, on the Climate Smart Larimer County Framework Initiative, we're getting ready to put together an RFP to bring on some consultants that can help with a public involvement process, which is really important, to get the public involved and see what their thoughts are on these issues. But there are lots of other things that we could, you know, bring people in to talk about.
We'll give folks a chance to put stuff in there.
There's a Q and A.
Yeah, Zach says we need to spend considerable effort on water sharing. Farmers that usually rent a lot of water are being told that there isn't any available due to 2020 drought. There is, there are a number that will go bankrupt because of this.
And is that one coming from Zach?
Yep.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate his informed involvement in all these things. And I appreciate his involvement as the Chair of the, you know, the, one of our boards, Ag Advisory Board. And I know we've got a meeting coming up on March 10th, I believe, Zach. And, and I think we really need to look at this water sharing issue really carefully and thoughtfully and figure out some tangible things, you know, to be able to move forward. So that's in response to, to what Zach raises. And I know it's incredibly important. You know, how do we protect irrigated farmland and, and all of that? We will have our DNR Director, Dylan Figs, at the next Ag Advisory Board to help foster some of that communication and answer questions. I guess when, this brings up one more thing, Michelle, if that's all right. And that is a really good way for folks to advise us, the commissioners, the elected folks, and to participate in the, in the work of the county, is to consider, you know, joining a board and commission. And I'm reminded that we have quite a number of openings because there's a bunch, there are a bunch of terms that expire June 30th. And there was a news release, I think it went out, that said, here are the openings. If you go to larimer.org backslash boards and commissions, you can see all the boards and commissions and where it says, applications being accepted, you can apply. And I believe the deadline is April 18th. And then after that, we will conduct interviews, we'll make selections for people to start July 1st. But that's an example of a really good way to, you know, get involved in county stuff. So I wanted, I wanted folks to be aware of that. So I'm glad, I'm glad that sparked that reminder.
Hey, Commissioner, we have regarding the water issue that Zach brought up. He says, because of what Zach said and the growth, isn't that a good reason to build glade?
Well, there's a lawsuit. I can't really speak to it. I'm sure that upsets you, Steve. And, you know, certainly the, the decision of the board at the time, you know, the issue of glade is that most of that water is going out of the, out of Larimer County. And one of the benefits, the Larimer County, as discussed in the hearings, is that the, I think I can speak to this, is the recreational value of establishing that reservoir. But 90% of the water is not going to be in Larimer County. Some of it will be with the Fort Collins Loveland Water District and some other places. So water storage is clearly a really important part of what we need to be doing. And I think that needs to be, that's going to be part of our discussions. Because if you look at goal number one, infrastructure, and there are some really good presentations that we've gotten, in addition to looking at water sharing agreements, we're also looking at water quality and, you know, water quantity and also wastewater and, you know, floodplain issues and stormwater issues as well. So that's my answer.
So Steve had a comment, and I'll read this out, Commissioner, but I don't know if we necessarily need to drag this on. Steve says, I agree, but this water is for our fellow citizens. So with that, Commissioner, I am not seeing any other hands raised. I'm not seeing other questions. We may be done for the morning.
Yeah, I think so. And again, just to say thank you to Michelle, thanks to Dwayne Penny. And of course, thanks to all of you folks. I, I welcome any ideas on how we can make these more productive, more effective. I do look forward to seeing everyone in person. I'm looking forward to traveling up your neck of the woods in about an hour or so. And, you know, I know that landfill is a big, is a big deal and the transportation corridors, and we definitely need to figure that out. And with this new director, I think that's, I think he's going to be great. And I appreciate that Rebecca was part of the interview process and that she's on that Solid Waste Policy Council. With all that said, I wish you well. And, you know, please take care.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Bye, everyone.